Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County for this date of December 8th, 2020. Welcome to all of you. It's nice, notice we're back in our realm up here with Plexiglas in between us and all of that sort of thing, which is an opportunity for me to remind all of you in the audience that if you're in the auditorium with us, you must keep your mask on. We require all of our folks to have them on at all times. So I see everyone doing that tonight, and I thank you for that, and we'll just keep an eye on things. If you would now stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now our Kids at Hope Fledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, it's time for our special orders of business, and while you begin the first one, I'm going to make my way down to the floor. I'm not going to ask the rest of the board members to come so that we don't have to worry about the social distancing and all of that, but I will leave it in your hands.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and tonight we have a special order of business where we're going to do a resolution for our board member who served on the board for six terms, 24 years, Ms. Catherine Hensley. We had a little reception for her just a little while ago, and I am going to ask Ms. Harrison to please read the proclamation at this time.
It's my pleasure to read a resolution of the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida honoring Catherine Hensley. Whereas Catherine Hensley served all children with honor and distinction as a member of the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida, and proved to be an inspiration and a role model locally and statewide for 24 years from November 1996 to November 2020. And whereas Catherine Hensley brought to her position immeasurable knowledge, a unique perspective, and significant influence throughout St. Lucie County and Florida, having served as a teacher, school volunteer, child advocate, Legislative Association representative, and founding member of multiple leagues, boards, and foundations that support children, as evidenced by her membership on over 80 committees, councils, consortiums, and workgroups. And whereas Catherine Hensley worked daily, as promised, in her office with mutual laughter echoing in the hall as she warmly greeted those who sought her expertise, listening and performing her duties in an optimistic yet realistic manner with a "we can do it" attitude, as she solved problems quickly and decisively, with the realization that decisions of the board have a greater long-term impact on the community than those of any other elected body at any other level of government. And whereas Catherine Hensley, working side by side with her fellow board members and community partners, has brought about robust arts and cultural programs, grants for student health care and natural world connection, an increased graduation rate, a Treasure Coast Educational Research and Development Park, the downtown farmer's market, transportation for disadvantaged citizens and students, alternative education programs, and collaborative bargaining. And whereas Catherine Hensley, a master board member, championed the advancement of educational initiatives for all children that will exist for years to come, showed courage through the lifting of a 27-year desegregation federal court order, explosive population growth, economic downturn, budget crises, equity issues, technology updates, school choice, charter schools, career and technical education, hurricanes, school safety, and the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Catherine Hensley has been and is highly recognized, as evidenced by the many honors and commendations from her colleagues and community for distinguished service, just as she recognizes that all employees are essential, that each one helps to create a shared understanding and mutual respect that they instill in each child every day. And whereas Catherine Hensley has consistently shown and modeled strength of character, courage, compassion, and above all else, an ethical and moral sense of fairness to all concerned in the matters coming before her as a member of the School Board of St. Lucie County. And whereas the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida should honor and recognize Catherine Hensley for her distinguished accomplishments on behalf of all children and citizens, and should formally recognize her for her efforts, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County in regular session duly assembled that Catherine Hensley be, and she is hereby honored and personally revered for her exemplary service to all children as a School Board member, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of this board formally to memorialize the distinguished and outstanding ability of Catherine Hensley, and that the original shall be presented to her, in witness whereof, the chairman and the superintendent have hereunto set their hand and seal this 8th day of December, 2020.
Thank you so much. What a rare privilege my life has been. And I have a spouse who has never criticized and always encouraged even harebrained ideas I had, and a few of those ideas I took to Mr. Harrell, and some of those ideas came to fruition. His expertise helped us over the years to actually create what became Palm Point. We were willing to get him walk away from the table more than once. Research Park, took about five years to pull that together. Moa at Harbor Branch, that was probably not five, about four. But the ideas that I took forward, his advice and his guidance helped bring the things to fruition, does actually benefiting our kids right now and our community as a whole. What a rare privilege that has been. We started back in the day with not only a bifurcated system, but a system basically if you were poor, you just didn't really have much of an advantage. That's changed, as you know. Over the years, we're many battles fought, and won mostly. Sometimes we had to back up a little bit and wait another year, but we did, we went forward. We attacked gangs, we attacked all kinds of different issues, healthcare, and everything was focused on the best interest of all children, every single child. So when we had the opportunity to do a discussion about a Kids at Hope project, Children's Services Council funded that project because we knew that without hope, a child never gets a plan for their future, and we had to give every child hope. And so we put some things in place that actually changed the community. This is the only place in the country where the county government, the School Board, and both cities passed a resolution for Kids at Hope projects. What a rare place to be. So it's been a challenge, it's been exciting. I am with the few people who've had my kids threatened and my house picketed and all that kind of thing, but you do what you need to do when you know it's the right thing for kids, and you stand up for it, and you do what you have to do, and you fight those battles. And in this county, we've won most of those battles. Our kids are in a better place now than they've ever been before. The future of our community is in a place that no one a few years ago thought could even exist. And what's happened here over time, little by little, has led us to where we are now. This district is a model way beyond Florida of what can be accomplished regardless of the demographics of your community. And the team of people behind me are absolutely the best people in the world. They are mission-focused, they are intelligent, they are the experts in their field, they work together as a team, they are pride and joy of the state of Florida, if only the state of Florida knew that. The politics gets in the way of a lot of things that we needed to do. So what happened was, you find a way to make it work. You've tried to take the negative and see what you can find in it that's positive that you can build on, and we were able to do that in many cases. So when we had all these downturns with finance, and we had all these issues that happened with budget cuts and intervention from the state, find what you can, make it positive, work forward because your mission is kids. It's not about one person, it's about the future of children. And when we made the decision years ago that when it came to employees, that all meant all, that means we didn't pick one group of people that we worked for. Every single employee is important to the operation of a positive community and a positive school system. So when we said all meant all, we meant it for kids, but we also meant it for our employees. I have had the most exciting opportunities that any human being could ever be given, challenges, friendships, wonderful things that have happened. So thanks to this community for that 24 years that I've had, for being able to serve in an elected position, to make things change for children and families. It's been fascinating, it's been exciting, I have met the best people in the world. And my new business card said, "And the work continues," because the work will continue. So I'll still be involved with foster care, healthcare, mental health, culture and arts, the economic interface, whether in urban or rural, a lot of different things out there that still need to be pushed forward. When we started, the promise is a promise. I had the idea at a meeting, I took it to Mike Lannan, and the goal was in five years to be able to fund some reimbursement for tuition for our employees who came to work for us. That's the one thing that's not been accomplished, that is on my list. So I'm challenging, somehow, we're going to figure out how to make that going forward. So thank you very much. As you know, my, I've always been more comfortable pouring coffee than sitting on the dais, and now I can do things that I maybe couldn't do before, a little bit more blunt than I have been, although I think you'll find that they don't think I've ever been not blunt. But I want to thank you for the privilege of serving this community, more than that, serving the future of children and being part of pushing the community forward to make sure that we look at children in a different way and create a successful pathway for every single child. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hensley, and you're right, the work does continue. Mr. Superintendent, do we have a motion on the recommendation, or recommendation for a motion? Sorry.
Call for a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion, a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes. Back in 2002, not many of you know this, but I was up for real, up for an election, and I really didn't know what I was doing, and I lost. And I thanked Carl, because Carl, it was Citizens Budget Committee, and he pulled me to the side and he says, "Hey, you've got potential, just come and meet with us." And I thank you for that opportunity, Carl, and then I didn't know I was going to run for the School Board in 2004, and then, you know, something happened, and I just felt like I wanted to do this. And I ran, and obviously I won, but it was different. And one of the first people that reached out to me was you, Catherine, and says, "We may not always agree, but we're family, and families get along and they talk," and I appreciate that, I appreciate the mentorship that you've, you've given me, not only to me, but my family too, from Jen and the kids too. You've meant a lot, and we've been through a lot, and I, from the bottom of my heart, I sincerely appreciate you and what you've done, not only just for me, but for the community and the kids that don't have a voice. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes. Although I haven't worked with you, Catherine, on the School Board, we did work together when I was on the city council, and I met you 25 years ago, 1995, in my old Lions Club. Everyone knows, and I'll be very short, everyone knows Catherine's for kids. We just went through the, the whole list of millions of things that she did. But the one thing I want to say to you, Catherine, and I don't say this lightly, because it carries a very warm thing to me when I say this to women, you are a real lady. You are a lady, Catherine, and thank you.
All in favor of accepting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you again for all you've done and will continue to do. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it back to you for the rest of our special orders.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and I would call on Ms. Lydia Martin to take over.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Jen. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to the podium to share with you information about the art in the Capitol contest.
Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent Jen, I am pleased to present to you the 2021 Art in the Capitol recognition. This is very important, because while some believe the arts to be extracurricular, in St. Lucie Public Schools, we believe that the arts are core academics and essential to the development of all students. House Bill 701, related to the Art in the Capitol competition, was signed into legislation in 2016. This competition is a statewide visual arts competition that requires each school district to annually hold an art competition for students in grades six through eight. The winning selection from each district is to be given to the legislator of the district in which the student resides and will be on exhibit at the state Capitol during the entire legislative session. Tonight, we have two students that are receiving honorable mention, Sienna Lawrence from the Creative Arts Academy, Cass, and Alex Franchi from Southport Middle School. Last week, the superintendent had the privilege of awarding to Cheyenne Coins, a sixth-grade student at Northport K8, as the winner of this year's Art in the Capitol artwork. Cheyenne's piece of work will be given to our legislator and hung in the state Capitol. Her teacher is Ms. Stephanie Ramirez. Congratulations to Cheyenne.
Up on the screen right now in front of you, board members, also is Adopt, Don't Shop. And when I went over to the school to give the award to Cheyenne, I talked to her teacher, Mrs. Ramirez, and I asked her what, what's going on in art classes, what's some of the, what's some of the cool stuff going on? And she shared with me this Adopt, Don't Shop, which was to raise awareness of the benefits of adopting cats and dogs. And so they used, and it's a partnership with the Dogs and Cats Forever and No Kill Animal Shelter in Fort Pierce. So I told the teacher, if you'll give me some information on that, the night we recognized Cheyenne, I'll also share that as a little bit of a plug. And you can, you can see that they've done some digital art, and these are some of kind of like the advertisements that they've been using in the community that the kids, the students have produced, and as you can see, they're very, very creative. And this is just an example of the, of the innovative and, and kind of neat, kind of cool things that are going on in our school centers. And so I want to again congratulate Mrs. Ramirez and her art class, and I promised her that I would share this if she would send me the information, and she sent it to me, I think, this morning, so she made it just in time. But I did want to do that, and it's representative of really all of our teachers and, and the innovative things that they're doing in school and trying to reach our students and make our communities better. So I just wanted to share that with the board at this time. Now I'd like to call on Dr. Helen Wild. She was going to make a presentation to the board at this time. As you're aware, last week, the governor and the commissioner of education really did a DOE, an executive order or an emergency order to give us some direction really for the second semester, and it was something that we were anticipating and waiting for. And so we have been in the process of communicating with our parents regarding what this means, and I wanted to make sure that the board was thoroughly informed of what will occur in the second semester. So I'd like to call Dr. Wild now to make her presentation, and then she can answer some questions at the very conclusion of this. Dr. Wild?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Jen. Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Jen, I am pleased to be here to cover the highlights of Executive Order 07. As Mr. Jen mentioned, this is our newest executive order that was released by Governor DeSantis on November 30th, and it does extend our state of emergency and our ability to do what we've been doing first semester due to COVID, and it establishes some new criteria that I will go over tonight with some of the highlights. It does also require that we submit a new plan that is due to the Department of Education on November 15th. Some of the highlights, the ones that are critically important to our families are related to instruction. It does continue our ability to continue our innovative learning modality, which is MySchool Online. There was some question about that until the executive order came out, so this was good news. But there is a new provision now that any student that is not making adequate progress must be notified that they are to transition back to traditional school, face-to-face, as soon as practical. So with that being said, we must notify them in writing of their reason, of the indicators that they're not making adequate progress, and invite them to come back. We are, though, to notify them that they do have parental choice, and they can give us written acknowledgement of their intent to remain on MySchool Online. Any student that does transition back to us as a result of this executive order will also be given additional interventions and support when they come back to face-to-face. So the inadequate progress indicators that we are utilizing include grades, attendance, as well as standardized assessments, test scores. And Dr. Prince has pulled some grade data for us that I'll share at the very end of the presentation, that are, that shows us that it is important to be paying attention to our students' progress and get them in the best learning environment possible. We did create a district form, a district form letter for every school to use to send to the parents to notify them of this, so that we have standardization across the district. It will indicate what that student's specific deficiencies are and the impact of potentially extending that online learning environment. We are using every method we can to notify parents of this, so we are going to be sending that letter through US Mail and also through our Skyward messaging system. We're going to send a school messenger to alert just those parents that they have a letter waiting for them that does require a response. And we are asking that they use that form to let us know of their intent either way, whether they're returning on January 4th or extending their MySchool. And we have provided that in multiple languages as well. I mentioned that interventions must be provided to every student, and that is when they return to brick and mortar, and we will be letting them know what their particular interventions are. We are also required to monitor their progress and report that to the Department of Education, and we're also doing that for first semester as well. The interventions that you might hear students are receiving include Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, tutoring, spring break camps, Saturday school, summer school, very specific student study team recommendations, the graduation coach might be monitoring their progress and meeting with them in high school. The executive order also requires that school districts continue school five days a week, face-to-face, just like the initial one. Any decision to close the school due to outbreaks rests with the superintendent and the School Board only. We are still required to provide full services, and I already mentioned, progress monitoring. Funding, we were also concerned about what the result of the governor's decision would be as it relates to funding, and they have told us that they will be continuing our current funding model for MySchool Online, which is the same as our face-to-face school setting. Districts who did not receive an increase of enrollment are still going to be held harmless, so we're not going to see a reduction in funding second semester based on enrollment. However, districts who saw an increase in enrollment will receive the funding for that, and in order to fund that, they are prorating the cost of that across all districts. So we will see a reduction, but it's not based on enrollment, it's based on the need to fund districts that saw growth. We do not have those numbers yet, that is currently being calculated, and we won't hear that until some future survey periods. But transportation categoricals have remained as well as given to us in the General Appropriations Act, so that was also positive news. There is another component that is telling us that we cannot tell people they have to wait to any certain time period if they choose to change their learning modality. So if a student wants to come back to brick and mortar or wants to switch to MySchool, we can no longer tell them that they have to wait for the end of the quarter or the semester, and in fact, we have to allow them to make that move within a week of their request. So that is a new component, and this does apply to charter schools and any public school that's accepting scholarships for students. There is an enhanced attendance component where we are to be monitoring student attendance and enrollment and making sure that students are enrolled in school. We also have to give a special focus to VPK in kindergarten, which we agree with, that is very appropriate, those are the students learning their foundational skills. So we will be making sure that we are monitoring their attendance and their progress and contacting anyone who is not attending school. And we need to also outline what resources we will be using, so we are working very closely with Student Services and Bill Tomlinson's department as our schools go out looking for any students. But this is not new to St. Lucie Public Schools, we've been doing that, Mr. Jen has, has been tracking that all along since the beginning of this pandemic, so we will continue those efforts. We also have to document that our professional development does focus on our teachers who are new to online instruction, and we have done a lot, and we will continue to do that, right down to one-on-one support if a teacher needs it. And another piece of good news was that the DOE and the governor did extend the requirement for teachers needing to receive their reading endorsement. It was initially extended to December, but opportunities to take the reading endorsement test have not been available, and so they have extended it one more time till the end of the year. Very good news for our teachers who are providing tiered interventions to students, teaching our retained students, or in the future, teaching summer school for us. So that was positive. I'll go to the data before we open it up to questions. We just wanted to illustrate the difference between last year and this year, and on the left side of your screen, you will see first-quarter grades from last school year versus first-quarter grades from this school year. These numbers do not represent students, they are actually grade marks. So if you see in the yellow on the bottom, that's the number of Fs received for first-quarter last year versus this year, and you can see the increase there. And then if you look at the very top, in the bluish area, that's the number of As earned, and you can see there's a decrease of As for this year. So that's one measure that is telling us that, that we need to really work with our students who are seeing a decline in their grades. But if you look here, Dr. Prince further broke it down to show you the difference between students in traditional versus MySchool. So if you look at the blue, those are our students in traditional, and you see similar patterns, you can see there's more, more As in traditional than in MySchool. And if you look to the far right, you can see the opposite, there are more Fs in MySchool. And so you can see it is harder for our teachers to reach students and to keep them motivated and doing their work in the MySchool format, which we would expect. So we are going to work really hard to make sure that any student who has declined is told to come back to school, and we'll continue to work with them and provide interventions. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you may have.
Dr. Mills?
Dr. Mills?
Dr. Wild, when it comes with the chart that you just showed us, the student performance grade comparison between the MySchool and traditional, is that included the high schools as well?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's from kindergarten or pre-K through high school?
Yes, K through 12. And as I said, since that does not represent individual students, it could be certain individuals had one F last year, and now they have three. It's actually grades, not students.
Other board members, questions or comments? Mr. Gent?
First off, I want to thank Dr. Wild for the presentation, and I sent you all an article today. I also shared it with our principals from the Washington Post and a research regarding a lost generation and the challenge. It's not only the challenge right here in St. Lucy County, this is the same challenge that we're facing really across the country. And we've been pretty much aware of this. We reached out to our students and have been doing that before the governor's actions last week. We have been really, our principals have done a really good job of trying to contact those students that are struggling at home, and there's a lot of reasons why that is. You know, it's very difficult when the parent's not there with them to monitor them. There's some unique stories and very creative stories that the teachers will tell regarding some of the things that occur online. For some students, this is the way to go. This is right up their lane, this is right up their alley, and there's not an issue with that. For many students and teachers alike, and we knew this, you know, it's a new method. We don't want to unfairly penalize our students. We're doing extensive professional development. We're reaching out to the families. Our school centers have done a remarkable job, our teachers, our support staff, this first half of the school year are to be commended for everything that they've done, because we have never faced a year like this, and yet we are rising to that challenge. And we'll come up with innovative solutions for this. We want, I've challenged our staff, Dr. Wild, you know, when we talk about summer school, I don't want a traditional summer school. I want us to, we're going to throw every idea on the wall and see what sticks, to see what we can do to try to catch these children up, because it'll be a little different this year than just focusing on third grade for promotion. We're really going to be, you know, emphasizing K through, it's a little easier at the secondary level, because they can do the online computer programs and try to catch up. But for the ones that need the fundamental skills, this has been my message. I was interviewed on two local TV stations and have stressed that. We really want our parents to call us if they have questions, to make sure that they're comfortable with the environment, to work with the students, because we've always talked about a summer slide. Well, now we have a COVID slide, and some of the children particularly, and it's an economic indicator that children that are lower economics and on the end of that spectrum are suffering more than other students, and so we want to make sure that that's been one of our strengths in this district is to find solutions for that. So our team is working on that. I also want to thank the governor and thank the commissioner of education, because they really did, for the most part, listen to the School Board Association, FADS, on the recommendations that we had made to them. And I can go back 25 years, even when I served, I had the opportunity to serve as principal in residence in Tallahassee, and I've never seen that collaboration where they were, you know, instead of a battle, and we have, we're almost choosing sides, it's really been a very collaborative effort, and the commissioner has really responded to what we have been saying from, you know, from the districts, as what we think is in the best interest of our students. So I really, you know, we don't do that very often, but I want to, you know, thank the governor and also thank Commissioner Corcoran for this, and we'll continue to model this, we'll continue to work through it. But I just want to again thank Dr. Wild for this and to share it with the board members. I know a couple of you contacted me and had some questions, and just want to make sure that's out there. We have sent letters out, we've done our messaging to the parents. We're hoping to get it in by Friday, the information, because it's, for certain school centers, the more students that come back creates unique challenges of almost like the beginning of school all over again. It's like a restart and changing schedules and really just restarting the programs, kind of like a battery recharge with the students. And we will welcome them back in and provide a quality education and a safe environment, and looking forward to this. And again, thank Dr. Wild, Dr. Prince for the information, and our entire staff, there's a bunch of them in the audience right now, that have been working tirelessly on this. We will meet the deadline. We're going to send it up, when, Helen, today?
I can do it today.
No, 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 no.
Tomorrow, if you sign it tonight.
We'll get it up to the DOE. We need to get the charter schools information up there as well, and the sooner the better so that we're ready to go. The other challenge we were concerned about was an economics of this, and that was another thing that brought a sigh of relief, that we know where we stand with our budget for the rest of the school year. Now, the legislative session in the following year is going to be another challenge, but right now it's just focused on getting through this year. And so if they would have, you know, there's different categorical funds that come down based upon the delivery method of instruction, and so they're going to hold us harmless, as was just mentioned, and that is a huge, huge benefit to the state of Florida and to all of the school districts. And again, we're thankful for that, and that was a sigh of relief, because before, until I saw it in writing and heard it, you know, we were very, very concerned about that. So we're pleased with where we are, but we have a lot of work to do and a lot of challenges. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Mills?
I want to reemphasize to our viewing audience that this is a national problem that we're having due to the COVID and children transferring from traditional to MySchool, virtual, and it is national. It's not just a state problem, but we're all going through this as a country, and so I just want to reemphasize that to our viewing audience, that it's not a St. Lucy County problem or a Florida problem. It's something that we're experiencing. I've heard over and over again, parents say how grateful they are for teachers now and how much more they appreciate the traditional setting with the teacher, because they understand how challenging it is to educate their children. And for many parents, in order to keep that child up to par with the MySchool, they have to be right there, you know, going through it with them. And otherwise, even our most advanced students will struggle when they get to certain places. So I want to thank, definitely thank our staff for all the work that you're doing. As I've already mentioned before, I'm a grandmother who's helping with the MySchool, and so I get to experience it first place, and I see the tremendous job. I have a high schooler, and I have two elementary, a fourth grader and a kindergartner, and a 10th grader. And the teachers are doing all they can do, and we have some wonderful teachers that are coming into our home and helping, but we have to be right there. And I want to encourage the parents, as much as possible, be there with your child. Do not leave them at the computer by themselves all day long, because that is going to be, can be a downfall for so many of our kids. And I know that many of our parents may not feel like they qualify to help with the teaching, but just your presence, so if your child is going up and hitting walls, you're there to help that child, reach out to the teacher and get the help they need. So parents, you are definitely our educators out there right now with the MySchool, as well as our teachers, and they do depend on you to help us make sure that our children succeed.
Good advice. All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Superintendent, we will move now to our special thanks and recognition, our star awards.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, today we have three individuals we are going to recognize. The first is Joseph Ortiz. He is a bus driver nominated by one of his parents that he drives their child, parent Ms. Brennan. She wanted us to know how thankful she is to have Mr. Ortiz as the bus driver for her daughter. He is kind and gentle, yet stern when needed. He goes above and beyond with the elementary children, especially when it is raining. He communicates with the parents when needed, for example, if they're having a substitute bus driver, or if he needs to share information with parents about their child's behavior on the bus. She just wanted everyone to know how blessed she is to have Mr. Ortiz looking over her daughter every day on the way to school and home. So congratulations to Mr. Ortiz. The next group are a transportation duo, Daphne Anderson, who is the driver, and Brenia Lester, who is the bus aide. These individuals were nominated by Ms. Karen, a parent. Her son, who is an ESE student, has developed a nice bond with both the driver and the bus aide. The bus aide has been wonderful to her child, and he has seemed to get very attached to her quickly. Both, the bus is always prompt with pickup and drop-off, and she knows that her son is always in good hands. Whenever she greets her son getting off the bus, they're always there to greet her with a smile and hands her child over. They demonstrate nothing but compassion and patience for him, and for that, she is truly thankful. These individuals have received their awards at their place, at their job site, and we just want to congratulate them publicly and thank them for their hard work. Thank you.
We send our congratulations to each of you for those special awards. It's time now for our ESAL report, and Mr. Freeland was not able to be with us tonight, but he did ask that I extend to everyone his good wishes for a very happy holiday and a restful winter break. A CWA report, Ms. Vickers? Good to see you tonight. And we move now to our consent agenda. Board members, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Board members, are there any items you wish to remove for special discussion or special vote? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the recommendation as is?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move now, Mr. Superintendent, to the superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few things this evening, and all of it's good news. Number one, I want to thank Ms. Holly, Mrs. Richardson, Mr. Ingersoll, you're able to come out with us, and Tom Jones from the Ed Foundation and Dr. Perry. We had a chance to go around to the schools, did it a little differently this year with the school-related employee of the year, the three finalists, Annie Jones from Fairlon, who is an assessment clerk, and Maria Carley at St. Lucy Elementary, who's an assessment clerk, and Norma Figaroa, who's a health professional at OCAM at K8. And so they will be our three finalists. And then for school-related employee of the year, we'll be continuing to work with the board after the break regarding our finalists for teacher of the year and some of the other awards. This year, our Night of the Stars will be a virtual event. We're still working through that, but it will be a totally virtual with an announcement at the very end of our winners, and Dr. Perry and our staff are working on that. Secondly, only one school from each state receives an award, which is from the Florida College Access Network. It's an American college application campaign to work around the goal of Apply Yourself Florida College Application Completion Campaign. The goal is to increase the number of first-generation students and students from low-income families who pursue college or post-secondary education by assisting the seniors with the college admission process. And there's only one school in the state of Florida, and that school is Port St. Lucy High School. And so congratulations to them, and we will recognize them at the board meeting in January a little more formally, but I just wanted to share that good news, because that's such a big deal. This Friday on our Facebook Live, we're going to have presentations from Dr. Wild and from Mr. Lazo from Westwood, and Mrs. Monterey Miller Buchanan from Central, and Henry Santa Maria from LPA regarding our high school attractor programs, the application window is now open for eighth graders to apply for the high school next year. So if parents want more information, that'll be on our Facebook Live. And then we do record that, and that's, again, is available on our website. Fourthly, with the holiday season, I just wanted to share with you that our school district and our different departments and our schools do a lot of outreach for our community and for our students. And I'm just going to highlight student assignment. A lot of folks would be surprised to know, we have right now 831 students that meet the McKinney Vento, a definition of homeless, which means they lack a fixed, regular, adequate residence for the evening. And so our different departments reach out, and I'm going to highlight student assignment this evening. Over Thanksgiving, families were given five different resources for Thanksgiving meals, either two to five days prior, and then they were able to pick the meals up, and we took care of them. Right now, our holiday Christmas bags have been distributed to over 469 registered McKinney Vento students, and they were able to attend in person and get those bags. We want to thank Barnes &amp; Nobles, Bombasox, Treasure Coast Food Bank, Keys Realtors, Geneva Financial, and the Fort Pierce Women's Club for the help with those bags. Each month, we do these, what's called a monthly birthday bag from Birthday Angels at select schools, where the students receive a duffel bag full of gifts just for them. And we rotate schools each year. This year, the schools are FK Suite in Fairlon, Lawnwood, Parkway, Westgate, Alapata, and Windmill Point. They also submit 25 referrals to the St. Lucy Sheriff's Department for the Shop for a Cop program for the holiday season. The Elks Club and Lenny, I call him Lenny, who's head of the Elks Lodge, they donate backpacks, toys, foods, and clothes, and toiletry items to 11 schools. It will reach over 1,150 students, including 270 homeless students who are enrolled at these 11 schools. And again, there's a lot of things. We do handwritten cards from staff members to the community members, but this is really one of our departments, in the student assignment department. So I just wanted to share that publicly with the board, and that's just one example of many things that are happening in our school centers for the outreach during the holiday season. Let's see, I have, let's see what else we got here. I don't know if you all know Jamison. Jamison is our, one of our site maintenance workers here in the building. You'll see him, you'd recognize him. He's a proud father of Jamison Jr., eight pounds and six ounces from last evening. And so I wanted to end on a real positive note. I know it's the holiday season and a lot's going on, and I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, and we still have a week and a half left here, but we're fortunate to be where we're at and to provide what we're doing in our school centers and the community, and the staffs here, and just tell them how proud I am of them and what they've done. It's already been mentioned tonight by some of the board members, but we have, you know, a fantastic group of folks that are here tonight, and those that aren't here that are at home now, and just want to wish them a happy holidays and thank them, and we've got to be safe, and we'll continue to do that and not to get careless. We're going to start a big campaign when we come back again. We've been doing this in our school centers. You get our update, weekly update or daily update of what's happening, and we've really got to, you know, we anticipate the bump that we're seeing right now from Thanksgiving, and we've just got to really encourage our community folks not to get complacent and to continue to social distance, to wear these masks, to really don't send children to school or staff members to school sick, and then just be as safe as we can over the break and when we come back, and then, you know, we're in for the second half, and the challenges that will bring, and we're up for the task. So again, happy holidays to everybody, and thank you to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board members, let me read into a motion confirming, approving, and ratifying all of the superintendent's actions taken during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report, and authorizing the superintendent's continuation of such actions for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report for us this evening?
No item, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We will then move to our school board member reports, and Ms. Richardson, I will start with you this evening.
Thank you so very much. So I don't have a report, but I would like to say Merry Christmas, a very happy and blessed New Year to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, the only report I have is with the TPO. We did meet this past week, and the school board was scheduled to, I guess Catherine Hensley was the vice chair, was scheduled to be the chairman for the TPO this year, and I did request to skip that, because even though I was on a TPO for 12 years and chairman previously.
Come on, Jack.
Things have changed. So Jeremiah, Fort Pierce was next in line, so they are, but I just want to let you know, we are back. Shannon Martin from Port St. Lucy is the vice chair, but we are back in rotation right after that, the third year. And I did go to school for that, and I have to go back to school, but there's a lot going on with the TPO, and I wouldn't begin, it's a lot to know. The acronyms are outrageous, but there's a lot of money there, more than you would ever think. ever think. It's probably the, of all the boards I've ever been on, that board has the most money for everything that we do in the county, I think. But, and we are, because of that, we are having a, a, a large reorganization, not a reorganization, but a redetermination of the funds that we have in our long-term plan, which goes to 2045. That's how far ahead we go with the things that we do in the city and, and has a lot, and it has a lot of bearing on the school system and how we get around. So that's the TPO. Other than that, Mr. Jent, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to bring this back because I'm so proud. What I read about this recognition from Port St. Lucie High School, that wasn't just the county or the state. Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that the only high school with that recognition in the entire country, sir?
There's 50 of them. There's only one from each state.
Okay.
And so it's still a major, major.
But it's, but it's.
What I call a big deal.
A recognition from the federal.
Yeah, it's the only, the only high school in, in the state of Florida.
With the only one in Florida then?
Correct.
Okay, that's good enough.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Kelly. And you keep plugging for school board on the TPO, okay? We appreciate you being there. Dr. Mills?
I want to congratulate again the young lady Cheyenne Collins, who was able to win district-wide file visual art contest, contest in Tallahassee. I've had the privilege in past years to go to Tallahassee and see those art projects that's hanging on the walls throughout the corridors. And it is definitely a highlight in Tallahassee. And she's going to be representing St. Lucie County at the state level. So again, young lady, we congratulate you for your, your win. Also, I wanted to mention the Facebook Live this Friday on December the 11th at 12:00 PM with Dr. Wiles and other principals. They will share information about the attractive programs. And those attractive programs are those specialized trainings and certifications and, and so forth that the district provides for students that have, that want to really go into certain different careers. So parents, make sure that if you have an eighth grader especially, you want to be on that Facebook Live because we have tons of different attractive programs here in St. Lucie County and you would be amazed at what you would learn and what your eighth grader would be able to experience. So make sure that you attend that if at all possible. The eighth graders can now apply for these programs. So again, I had an eighth grader a couple of times and I applied for the programs and my kids got in the programs. And so I just encourage you, and they were great for my children. So I just encourage you parents to find out about all of these wonderful career opportunity programs that we have at our different schools. Again, that will be Friday on Facebook Live and it will be at 12:00 PM with Dr. Helen Wiles. She's our chief academic officer as well as our principals that Superintendent Jent mentioned. Also, I want to also congratulate the, the school-related employees of the year. I was not personally able to make it, but I want to congratulate and acknowledge your names here. Ms. Carley, Ms. Jones and Ms. Figaroa. Did I pronounce her name right? Figaroa, okay. Congratulations to all three of those schools, Okamic, Fairlon and St. Lucie Elementary for your support staff that have won as finalists. And then also what I, what I read, and I want to thank Ms. Lilia, Lydia for helping with the St. Lucie links because I also read today that St. Lucie, the city of Port St. Lucie is offering free Wi-Fi hotspots for our my school students. And they are providing over 2,000 mobile hotspots. So there are requirements and there is eligibility requirements, parents, it's based on income. So if you think you qualify and you want that hotspot for your child, that mobile hotspot, please contact our city of Port St. Lucie. I believe it's City Hall, would you would contact them? I don't have a number, but I'm sure you can find it, parent, if you need that hotspot. It is free of charge and it's due to the COVID. So again, if you need that, please take advantage of that. And last but not least, our luncheon, our principals' luncheon. Thank all of those volunteers and those of us that went out and went to a school and delivered a lunch. I found that a very nice thing that we did and it definitely helped me get into the holiday spirit. So thank you so much. And also to the provider, the restaurant, Tudy Frisco, thank you for what you've done for St. Lucie County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am, we have a lot to be thankful for. I attended on Zoom on my SAT committee with Liquid Park Elementary. And I'm just really impressed on how we're able to continue to meet as a community and as a, as a, as a staff with teachers and paraprofessionals and really want to appreciate, thank Ms. Carrie Wildkevitz for inviting me still. It's been a good year. I want to thank all the staff. We, we've seen some changes and you guys have done phenomenal. And I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'm just excited that Jack Kelly can hear us.
Yes, sir, especially you.
Yes, I want to thank Vaughn, Terrence and Craig Jerome for doing such a phenomenal job. I think the superintendent looks like he wants to sing. Give him a microphone. Thank you so much and have a safe new year.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Let me just take this opportunity as well to wish all of you, whether you're here with us tonight or joining us on TV or video, to wish all of you a very restful and peaceful holiday winter break. May you find time to be with those that you love, whether it be virtually or in person, but to just really appreciate one another and the time that you have together. These are very, very stressful times for all of us, but family is first and most important. And I just ask you to recognize that blessing, spend time together in whatever fashion that you can. I said to someone earlier today that everything is different, but everything is the same. And that's kind of how it feels in this mishmash that we find ourselves in in this pandemic. So look for the silver linings and the bright spots and the love because I promise you, it's still out there. Ms. Harrison, do we have any unscheduled speakers? Mr. Jent? You want to be an unscheduled speaker?
You know, I meant to do this the last time. Chris wrote, writes those, what are they officially called? Resolution, proclamation. You know, and those are remarkable. She did it for Carol and she did it for Catherine and, and, and it's just a talent and it's difficult. And I just, you know, I want to publicly say thank you. That's, you know, I'm not going anywhere, but if I ever do, I wanted to write something nice.
We'll have her write your eulogy.
No, but it was, it was remarkable and I want to say thank you. It was, it's very moving and touching and there's, individualized, both of them were individualized on different things. And I know the board members, you know, picked up on some of that. So I just say thank you, great job.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Jent, because you are absolutely on target with that. The difference in what makes him so special is that it comes straight from her heart and she's able to capture all of those years and all of the missions and all of the things that our school board members have been through. So on behalf of all of us, Chris, thank you. Well done.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We do have a workshop meeting next week with the board?
Yes, we do.
I think it was mentioned.
Yes, we do. Okay, we have no unscheduled speakers to come before us then, so we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.